The Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission to order. It is 6:44 PM. Please call the roll one more time.
Debbie Moore.
Here.
Ishmael Harris.
Here.
Carrie Kahler.
Here.
Scott Long.
Here.
Patrice Parsons.
Here.
Judah Ross.
Here.
Kristy Koch.
Here.
David Barrow.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. And go move on to item two, although I don't know who this person is. We don't know very well. We do have one citizen comment. Her name is Cynthia Sanders Meyer. If you would please come to the microphone and introduce yourself. You will have three minutes.
Thank you so much Chairman Mayor Moore. And it's so strange. I'm programmed to come here every last Thursday for the past six years to show up, but I'm over here now. And I'm just so thankful to all of you. I can't tell you how much your volunteering for this commission means to the whole city. Since I've been here last time, I very graciously and humbly have been elected to City Council. So tonight I was going to say thank you, but I'm not going to say that because we're all going to work together. And I look forward to all of you calling on me because I'm here to serve all of you too, not just the citizens out here. You all mean everything to me. This is where I cut my teeth. And this is the most valuable experience everyone will ever have. The knowledge that you will gain on this commission is invaluable. Judah, Pete, Ish, Kristy, Debbie, Carrie, David, and Scott. Some of you I've served a short time with, others years with. Debbie and Ish, we've been together a long time in this, haven't we? David, I only got to sit with you a couple of times, but I so am thankful for you sitting next to me on this commission. My thoughts are you mean everything to this city. And I appreciate all of you. And I couldn't be more thankful for the past six years that I've served. But I so look forward to serving you on City Council and working with you to make this city all that it can be and more than it can be. And I just thank all of you so much.
Thank you Cynthia, and it was a pleasure serving with you as well.
As I tell you the night you were sworn in, our loss is the council's gain. So go get them girlfriend. And I assume we have no other citizen comments?
No other comments.
Thank you. Item three, items for individual consideration. Item 3A. Consider action to approve meeting minutes from the April 27, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. You've all had given a copy. You had a chance to read them. Do you have any additions, corrections, deletions? If not, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, seconded. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it passed unanimously. Item 3C. Public hearing to consider and act on amending section 2.4.001. Nonconforming uses and structures continuing lawful use of property and existence of structures. Item four, nonconforming use or structure may be expanded, reoccupied with another nonconforming use or increased as of the effective date of this code unless authorized by the ZBA by adding an administrative relief component for residents.
Excuse me Chairperson Moore, I think we skipped item 3B.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Thank you for straightening me out. Let's go back to item 3B. Consider action to approve meeting minutes from the April 24, 2023 Impact the Advisory Committee meeting minutes.
Motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor? Opposed? Let the record show that it passed unanimously. Thank you. Do I have to read it again, Rosen?
I hate to say yes, but I would have you read it again just for clarity first. I know it's a mouthful.
Deep breath, okay. Item 3C. Public hearing to consider and act on amending section 2.4.001. Nonconforming uses and structures continuing lawful use of property and existence of structures. Item four, nonconforming use or structure may be expanded, reoccupied with another nonconforming use or increased as of the effective date of this code unless authorized by the ZBA by adding an administrative relief component for residents. Mr. Joe.
Thank you Chairmore and Council and Commissioner Zari. If you remember, we talked about some administrative relief in our last workshop, this is the last meeting. Had quite a big conversation about what we thought it should look like, right? How do we continue a nonconforming use? What, how long do we allow that to happen? What's the percentage of value? All of that good stuff. We were pretty much in agreement with this intent statement in section 2.4. And we didn't seem to have any issues there. So what I'm looking for today, again, is just some more, that's why it's a public hearing, right? So we're open to public hearing, to have folks come in and comment if they like. And again, this was just an amendment to the intent statement to talk about an administrative relief component. We kind of later defined that before. If you recall, we also talked about how do I continually lawfully use my property or structure? And this is how it's currently written today, right? It can't be in use for, you can't stop its use for six months or longer. We had 50% of the value for the B-CAD if it was damaged. We had some place type standards we talked about, and we talked about the 50% for the total appraised value lost due to damage that you were also using the B-CAD, if you recall. So what we did was we took your input, we put together another slide, and this is basically what we all talked about at the last meeting. What we're saying now is your use would be 18 months, so you'd have to stop the use for 18 months. We all, or there was some general consensus, right? We're going to vote on that later at some point, but tonight we're going to have a public hearing about it. Essentially, instead of six months, we were talking about 18, if you recall, right? So if a business has no, hasn't been in use for longer than six months, you are considered nonconforming. We can make you come into compliance. We extended that time period to 18 months based off our workshop at the last meeting. I think that's what we all talked about, but I wanted to kind of verify tonight. Change something if we want to, have some public comment if we need to. But we'd all talked about 18 months is the new, the new norm. So I think we're still good with that. The discontinues of the nonconforming act for an abandonment of structure, like we talked about for an example. You had mentioned we didn't want to use 50% of the cost associated with the B-CAD value and said it was construction cost.
I think what we said was square footage.
You did say square footage. I'm glad we're having this meeting. Thank goodness you remember. Okay. And we also, so maybe the amendment, you're right, was square footage for structural alterations, and it was the cost associated with replacement value? Are we also keeping that at square footage?
I'm not sure if this is the right time in the, in the meeting discussion, but I think we, my, my personal opinion is we should be consistent across whatever we do. And I think that construction cost is so variable, given everything, that we should just go with square footage because it's black and white.
Works for me.
Right. I agree.
I think that's what we recommended.
Agreed.
Perfect. Sorry about that. I think I, it's absolutely my fault. I misremembered. With that, again, you can open your public hearing. We're always just wanting to recap and make sure we're all on the same page. And we also talked about the notification, which is the next item. Essentially, you'll be 500 feet from now on instead of 200.
Are there any other questions? If not, I will open the public hearing. Are there any, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Not at this time.
If no one wishes to speak on item 3C, I will close the public hearing. Do we have any other questions of Mr. Joe?
So one of the changes I see are on page 13 is the 200 feet radius. That's if it's, if it's nonconforming, but it, it fits into the neighborhood. Is that correct?
Correct. That was the administrative relief we talked about. So we're writing this administrative component in. And what, what you proposed was the distance would now be 500, right? Sorry, I didn't get to this slide clearly. And then we talked about an appeal process, right? So there's an administrative relief process where we notify you within 500 feet instead of 200 feet now. And if it looks the same, feels the same, has the same look, then there's an administrative opportunity for us to fix that. We also added this at the next meeting that if the administrative decision is by the Director of the Times, just no, we don't believe. You have to come into compliance. You still think you're nonconforming. After the 18 months, after all the stuff we've talked about has already happened, there's an appeal process to the City Manager of the designee, and it takes a certain amount of time.
So I see 200 here.
That's what was proposed at the last meeting. What we changed it to was 500. That's, that's, you're correct.
Okay.
It was 200. It's highlighted. We talked at the last meeting that would be 500. And I'm assuming we're all still good with that, but yeah.
I have a question. I, I can't refresh my memory. How far out do we notice? Does the city notice neighbors?
200 feet is the requirement. What we talked about at the last meeting was expanding that.
Making it consistent.
Right, making it consistent. That's correct. So we would send notice at 500 feet. We would also put a 500 foot circle around something to get that administrative ring.
Okay.
So we were going to change both.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll stay at 500 feet? Okay. Have a question?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. What is that motion?
A motion to approved with the changes discussed, which include 500 feet consistency for notice and radius and square footage being 50% of the structure.
Second. I'll second that motion.
Motion and a second. Would you call the roll please ma'am?
Apologize. Could you tell me who made the second motion?
I made the motion.
Kayla made it.
Sorry, that was me. I had a frog in my throat.
Apologize.
Not a problem.
Carrie Kahler.
Aye.
David Barrow.
Aye.
Scott Long.
Yes.
Debbie Moore.
Yes.
Kristy Koch. Oh, no, sorry. Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Abstain. I'm still, the four months aren't up.
Yeah, you're no longer required to recuse yourself abstaining from the voting on amendments. So we can take your vote if you choose to, or you can choose to. Okay.
Ishmael Harris.
Yes.
Patrice Parsons.
Yes.
Judah Ross.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes with one abstention. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item four, workshop presentation and workshop to discuss regulations for short-term rentals. Madam City Manager.
Thank you Commissioners. We'll come back to staff update here in a second. So at the request of Commissioner Long, bring back some information regarding short-term rentals. And the news is bad, and the legislature continues to make it worse. So at this point, we have little to no ability to prevent, restrict, or ban. There's some court cases that we'll go through in the next couple of slides that continue to erode away city authority. There is a bill in front of the legislature that should make it to the governor's desk, if not already there, on other preemption that reduces cities' abilities even more. The Fifth Circuit Court has taken some pretty strong stances on property rights and have thrown out two cases on that basis. There's currently a statewide study that's been commissioned to see the impact of short-term rentals because it is a very litigious issue right now among every city trying to handle it a different way. So the case that we all know and talk about was 2019, and that's the Tari case in Austin. Austin attempted to pass an ordinance that kept short-term rentals out of single-family districts. It attempted to preclude those single fam, those STRs from having things like weddings and banquets and things like that. So essentially, the court has said, nope, sorry, it's a property rights state. You can't preempt people from doing what they want to on their property. So the, the city has some relief in existing ordinance is what the, is what the court said. You already have ordinances in place. You don't need an additional ordinance to regulate what people should be able to do on property that they own. Next case, this one is out of New Orleans, and this is a more recent case. This is 2022. New Orleans tried to say, well, you must be an resident to be able to own and operate an STR so that we know where you are, we can reach you, we can contact you. And the court said, nope, don't think so. It's a property right. They can do what they want to with their property. And it effectively removed any additional restrictions. Even in cities I used to manage before, we had a requirement for people to live within a certain area so that we could notice them on the guise of an emergency, et cetera, et cetera. And the court said, nope, can't do that. So we were asked how many of these exist in Bastrop. These are how many are quote unquote legally registered. Because in Airbnb, a short-term rental should be registered with the state and should be paying their portion of hotel occupancy tax. If you do a search on Airbnb, you're gonna find more than five. You're gonna find a lot more than what's on this list. So we begin the enforcement. We can still begin the enforcement on the fiscal side that they are not registered with the comptroller and are not properly paying their hotel occupancy tax. State doesn't have any issue with that because the state gets their portion too. So how can we address STRs? We have very, very, very limited ability on the life, health, and safety side. In Port Aransas, Saranhas Pass Rockport, we used to say, we're on the coast, it's hurricanes, I need to know who's in my city. I need to be able to help them get out. I need to know who's here. And we can do that through the registration process. They put a sticker on their window as PDs driving up and down the streets, making sure everybody evacuated. That's how we locate that folks may not know where to go. Court said, nope, don't think so. So they said, you're stuck with any existing ordinances that you already have. If you need to strengthen those ordinances, that's one thing. And go and do that, enforce the ordinances that you have in the code and enforce them well, and you wouldn't have to be addressing STRs. So, sorry Commissioner Long.
That's all well and good. Existing ordinances, if that's the only way to fight it, but if none of these ordinances are currently being enforced anyway, I mean, is there any way to step up that?
We can. We can, and I'm happy to have an offline conversation.
For example, in my neighborhood, on a city street, someone kept parking an RV and plugging it into a house and was basically camping on a public street for a long time. It took, I know that the truck came out. I don't know who called them, but it came out multiple times, and it sat there for a month. I'm wondering, at the time, I think there was only one person who did that type of enforcement? And is that what we still have? And is there anybody who can actually enforce some of these like non-emergency type ordinances?
It depends on.
Or is there a plan to have more people to, as the city grows, to have more people to enforce those ordinances?
Well, it depends on what the section is. So noise, parking, lights, those are typically going to be evening. Those are typically going to be police calls, non-emergent 911 calls. So the police will show up if there is an emergency situation. Litter, parking if it's in the daylight. We do have one code enforcement officer, although her focus is mostly animal control. So we're working with police to revamp that and what does that job description really look like? And then, you know, the other, the fire safety, if there is an overcrowding or something like that, the exits are being blocked, that would be a fire department issue.
The code enforcement also doubles as animal control?
Yes.
We don't have any specific animal control, other than just the code enforcement officer who does everything?
The code enforcement officer, yes.
The reason I ask that is because we had two dogs run through our neighborhood, ate through my fence, ate through my neighbor's fence. Nobody could do anything about it. The shelter was full. Nobody would take the dogs away. My wife was trapped in the house, couldn't even get outside. And there was no code enforcement officer that could come and do anything about it.
We didn't show up?
No, they didn't do anything. And basically, we had to wait until someone found the owner in our neighborhood to come over. My entire fence was wrecked, my gate, my neighbor's was as well, being terrorized by dogs. It got in our house, and nobody did anything. And so code enforcement, okay, if we can do that, might help in situations with things like Airbnbs and these short-term rentals when people are parking all over and blocking driveways and stuff like that. But if there's no one there to effectively make that happen, then it does nothing anyway. If this is the only way we have to fight that, but we don't have the ability to even take care of a dog running crazy in a neighborhood breaking through people's fences, how are you going to take care of it when it becomes an actual issue? So I understand all these legal cases and everything else regarding short-term rentals. Okay, if this is the only thing, maybe this and HOAs is the only thing we have to actually fight against that type of thing. Well, it's clear that the city needs to probably beef that up because if we have one person and now all they're doing is chasing dogs around and not being able, and not even doing that sometimes, if, if there's a breakout of whatever at the shelter where they can't take dogs there and everything else. I mean, we probably need more. We probably need some help in that, in that area.
Happy to have an offline conversation with you on the animal control issue because that is her primary duty at this particular.
I get that. I just mean, as it, as it pertains to this, because if that, if that's part of the, you know, another aspect of it too, enforcing all of these different things, that seems like a lot for one person. And as the city grows, that seems, if it's not going very well right now, it seems like it would be a lot worse if the city grows and more of these show up. You're not going to have anybody to be able to take care of that.
Well, from the perspective of code enforcement, most of the calls that we get are grass and high weeds. And then when we get substandard building calls, those aren't necessarily code enforcement. Those are relayed to the building official and through the inspection staff. So kind of more than one, but it depends on where it is on the continuum. So things that are police issue where they can receive a citation, the police should show up. Again, it's, if it's a non-emergent issue, they are going to show up after the emergency. So happy to have an offline conversation with you on the animal.
One, I would agree with Scott. I think the city needs to put more funding and have more people for code enforcement. And as we continue to grow, it's going to be necessary. In regards to the Airbnb, although I see we, we are hampered by the state, I do think we should be enforcing everything we can. I think anyone who's lived next to an Airbnb will tell you it lowers the quality of life in the neighborhood. I think it adds to an affordability issue for people trying to buy homes for their residents. I certainly think at the very least, we should, what enforcement we have to make sure that they are registered and paying their taxes. We can all go on Airbnb and see that there's way more than we have on this paper. We should, I think we should correct that promptly.
I would like to also say something about the Airbnbs. I can see both sides, right? I can see why people would not want to have them here in Bastrop. But I also can see that, because it's almost, I kind of, it seems maybe to me from the conversation that it's not wanted at all. And I can see that residents who are here, who maybe are able to have another house, maybe can use that for their income, right? I'm all about the regulations, the code enforcement is on it. I just, I think if we are going to have them or try to have some kind of regulations for them, we, you know, maybe take some consideration into the residents that are here. I know we don't want to have big corporations coming in, buying up houses and just, because that's, that's the opposite of what I want. But I don't want it to be to where we make it so hard to have one that we take away from the residents who are living here to use it for income for themselves.
I think the whole point of the discussion is we have very little ability to regulate them, whether it's a company coming in and buying 50 or an individual having a second home here. But yes, your point is well taken about reporting what we can to the state just by running a search on all of the sites.
And I know that right across the street from me is an Airbnb. And I know some others in town, and they're, they're properly maintained. Their people that come there are quiet. They're not booking big parties. So there's not lots of streets. It's sometimes Grandma and Grandpa come in for a graduation or a weekend getaway or whatever. So there are lots of, we used to have to go, when they were the old B&amp;B days, you had, you used to have to come and get a permit for all of that good stuff. We don't do that anymore. But I don't think that, that Airbnbs are, are a bad thing in a neighborhood when they're properly maintained.
And, and I don't think the reason that I brought this up originally was to demonize Airbnbs or people's ability to make money off of them or anything else. It was more to figure out what is available when there is a problem, not the fact that they're a problem blanket across the board. That's not the issue. The issue is if something becomes a problem, then what can you do? And obviously, if we can use existing ordinances to take care of that, that's fine. If we have enough people to enforce those existing ordinances, if we don't, then we don't have anything to fight with.
Correct.
I have a question, and, and I'm sorry, you may have, you may have answered this already. It's been a long day. Did you say that the city is or is not permitted to require a registration to the city?
Under very, very limited circumstances because the, the premise of the two cases, the most recent one especially, is that we have to treat it as we would any single-family residence. So unless we're, unless we're requiring all of the single-family residences to register, it's very hard to single out.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And to Scott's point, I think, you know, we could regulate those people just, you know, as well as the residents, right? So every time that person has, you know, someone that violates, you know, we stiffen or they get a, a fine or whatever, and then, you know, to where they have to stiffen the regulations and vet their, their renters a little bit more, right? And it just cleans it up. So if they get hit, you know, on the fines, then hey, we got to vet these people a little more. And that helps with getting the right people in for the, so I, I understand Scott.
I'm confused. I heard him say that we can, I heard you say that we cannot request that people who want to have an Airbnb register with the city. Is that what you said?
Correct.
How do we identify the Airbnbs and be sure that they're paying their taxes?
You just, we're just going to run a search on the Airbnb sites and the Travelocity side and the kayak site and just do a cross-reference.
Got it. And you'll just do that regularly?
Yes. That's, that's the only way to catch them. Okay. Moving on. Next item is a discussion on planned development districts. So this item will be at your next regular meeting. Today is a discussion and any questions that you may have and anything else that we need to incorporate into, into the code. The whole impetus of a planned development district is flexibility. And it is, it is my opinion that the B3 code and some of the discussion in the B3 code, a site plan, a neighborhood regulating plan, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, attempted to capture what a PDD used to do. But we wrote it out of the B3 code. We wrote allowable legislation out of the B3 code. And so what we did is we put in administrative stopgaps in the current code. And those administrative stopgaps are going to come to you. They're going to come to zoning board of adjustment. They're going to go to the historic landmark. They're going to go to construction standards board. When really, there is a tool in the code book already in the state statute that allows us to do what needs to be done. I remind you that the whole purpose of development regulations is orderly development. Make sure we have streets, water, sewer, safe and habitable places to live and work. So why a B3, why a PDD? So I kept hearing, well, the B3 is too rigid, the B3 is too rigid, you know, I've got a block structure, I've got an X, Y, Z, I need to meet. And sometimes in those discussions with staff, staff would say, yeah, it doesn't really make sense. But they have to warrant their way out of it. They've got to vary their way out of it. We've got to bring it to a board or a commission. And so I keep going back to what is the intent of the state statute? What is the intent of the B3 code? And like, I kept telling you all early on that anytime we're going to get sued, the first place the court's going to go is what was the intent of your code? And is this development meeting that intent? And if so, why are you trying to treat it differently? So it really is going back to super basics and going back to the tools that have been in the statute and have withstood the test of time and have withstood court cases against them. So again, I'm going to tell you, it's process, it's process, it's process, it's process, it's execution, it's process. So what are the mechanics of a PDD? A PDD is really a zoning district. It's going to sit over what is already zoned. Your base standards should be similar. You cannot put an 18-story hotel over a residential place. It just won't happen. That's not going to be allowed in a PDD. But what it can do is if there is a commercial place standard and there is a commercial development that wants to go over it, but we need to be flexible on the transportation, on the connectivity, on the lot size, on the parking, on the land. the transportation, on the connectivity, on the lot size, on the parking, on the landscaping, on the lighting, on the facade, on the setback, on any one of those things, you can work through with the PDD. What I can't do in a PDD is I can't say, you need an 18-inch water line. That's okay. You can do 12. We're, we're good. You're gonna have water. Or I can't say, well, you don't need sewer. You can go ahead and put a septic there, even though sewer's 50 feet away from you. Can't do that. What it does give us is ability to say, huh, orienting the building in that direction makes a little bit better sense. Maybe it's not fronting the street at that particular point in time. Or maybe it makes more sense, this developer wants to have less parking and not be overparked and wants to have additional landscaping. Or maybe this developer wants to do X, Y, Z. It allows staff to make sure, one, it meets the comprehensive plan. We're, we're doing orderly development. Two, it meets some base standard. And three, overall, are we still dealing with traffic? Are we still dealing with water, sewer, drainage? Can the fire department still get there? Are we not causing super congestion? Are we not causing any of the other issues that orderly development is supposed to take care of? So, from a staffing perspective, it is a zoning district. It comes, just like a zoning change, and it follows the property, just like a zoning change. So that process is the same. You will see a report, you will see water usage, traffic usage, you'll see how it aligns with the comprehensive plan, you'll see how it aligns with the transportation plan, you'll see those things that don't match and why staff thinks that's okay. And if not, staff may say, mm, yeah, we're going to do it. Here's an alternate, meaner method for compliance. What it does is it allows staff and the developer to be a lot more flexible and doesn't bring the sausage making to the dais here, where we are stuck deciding, is four cars or three cars enough? Is it three and a half? Is it two? Does that circulation pattern work? I think it works. You think it works. I don't know. We think it works. I don't know. None of that happens here. It should all be dealt with. That's the staff level. Obviously, if we can't get to that point at the staff level, it's gonna rise to you, just like a rezoning would. Just like a rezoning would. Notice happens. The neighborhood's here about what's happening. People who are impacted have an opportunity to come and speak to you. So it does also have that public component, because what I heard a lot of is, oh, you're trying to go and you're trying to make this easier. Heck, yeah, I'm trying to make it easier, but I'm not trying to shy away from, you know what's happening around you when we're doing something. Ooh, that's horrible alignment. So, this is the example. So for example, a commercial person wants to, a commercial development wants to amend the block length. They want to amend the setback. They wanna change the circulation pattern of the, of the drive paths. Then it allows staff to work with them, but it doesn't allow us to just put any development anywhere. I mean, that is not the intent of it. The intent is not to plop a development in the middle of where a road alignment should be. So. That was it. Questions?
Geographically, is there like a minimum amount of space that a PDD takes up? Like, can you just do this on one block? What, what defines it?
Theoretically, there isn't a size requirement, but we'd be hard-pressed to allow one single-family home to do a PDD. That's more a variance process. That's more, they usually want one or two things in, to be varied either through planning commissioner, zoning board of adjustment.
Can you give some examples of current or past projects in Bastrop where this might apply?
Hmm, uh, I would say, I would say the movie theater. The movie, not the movie theater, um, the movie studio. Mm-hmm. The movie studio project would be a good example. Only a portion of that property was annexed, and so the portion that was annexed still needed to meet some connectivity, some, some grid standards, so to speak. But most of that was all internal circulation. So what we had asked for was a connection of Lover's Lane all the way down, sort of parallel to Margie's Way. We could have asked for some alternate connection and given on some alternate layouts so where he could still get around, and we wouldn't have made Lover's Lane or Margie's Way any more dangerous. We could have connected in a different, in a different manner or a different pattern. And then also given him the densities that he wanted initially on that property. That's the closest I can think of right now.
Just adding to it, in my personal experience, I think with the amount of warrants and variances that we considered for the Burleson Crossing, um, project, that might have been a good, good project for a, a PDD.
Very good, very good, yes.
Uh, we did consider a lot of warrants and variances for that crossing, and I would argue they made very little effort to abide by our code. And this, oh, this smells to me like an erosion of the code. And I would say that we were managing our, our, you know, all, all these things before the B3 arguably not very well. And I think this commission's done a really good job when those things have come to us, of providing that community input and allowing the citizens to show up and have that discussion and us consider all of those facts out in the open and have that be a pressure relief valve. Uh, I'm, I'm not convinced that this is something that we need.
I, I agree. I, while I, while I don't think, I, I think there's a lot of problems with the code and those projects in particular, maybe shouldn't have been as difficult. I, the, the citizens adopted this code and they wanted it, and this to me just seems like a way to circumvent it. So at, at the very least, I'd want more discussion and, and open here, or have, you know, citizen comments, but I, I wouldn't agree. I don't.
I agree, I agree as well. It just seems like, oh, well, if, if we don't wanna have to go through any of that stuff before, we'll just slap this on it, and now we don't even have to go in front of, it'll all be done administratively. Is that correct?
No, it'll, it'll still come here. It'll, it'll still come here. There will still be notice to people within 200 or 500 feet.
And I just wanna add clarification as well. Kinda as Sylvia was stating, any PDD is gonna be based on an existing zoning district that is already in existence. So, we're looking at taking what the, maybe most closest zoning district may be, and then adding the alterations or modifications that makes sense. And it's not to say that we still won't enforce variances or we still won't force them to meet the intent of the code, but just offers possibly a little bit more flexibility. But I do understand the, the questions and considerations made by the commission, and that should be definitely considered.
I just caution against the rigidity, the rigidity in the code, because anytime we go to court is what was the intent of that? And we're gonna go back to orderly and safe development. And does a block system in the middle of the Walmart and Target parking lot accomplish that?
Well, we had talked about having some, uh, community discussions. What if we bring this to the community?
That's the next, the next meeting is a public hearing. This is just a workshop.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think in general, um, a, a lot of these actions we're taking do seem to be to, um, make it easier for developers and to find ways around the rigidity of the code. I think it's, it's necessary, but I, I, I think we need to be going back, we should be going back to the code and if there's real issues, changing it instead, I don't know, instead of just finding different ways to.
So I, I will agree, this is a way to relieve the pressure on the code. I will not agree at all, and I will also agree that it is an alternate method of compliance. It is not a way around the code. It is a way through the code. What is around the code are variances and warrants. That's way around the code. And Buc-Ee's is a perfect example. That driveway that we varied and gave Buc-Ee's a variance for now has 16 collisions a quarter. So I, I don't believe that a PDD is eroding the code. I think if we continue with the code in its present form, the entire code will end up dying. A very quick death.
I foresee, I foresee great, I foresee great discussions in the future because there's some folks on this commission and some folks in the community that have very differing opinions of what should or shouldn't be done. But we have to also remember that whatever steps we take and whatever votes we make, either are upheld or, or voted down by the council. So this commission can only do so much.
No, I agree. And, and not just by the development community. I think the non-conforming structures and uses, the, the vote that you guys took before, I think that was an action by this coun, by this commission, that you guys had no idea what the ramifications to that were when that vote was taken. Very similar to some items in the commercial development structure. Very, very, very similar. I would encourage any of you to come drive around with me and we talk through some of what makes sense and doesn't make sense. And I also feel very strongly that there are community members who do not understand this code at all, because staff was struggling to understand this code.
Nor do they want to.
Well, staff was struggling to understand the code as well. And this is staff who's supposed to be the practitioners and the executioners of this code. So my position really is one from a, if there are discussions on either end of the spectrum on how difficult the code is to get through, or its disparate impact on one segment of the population or the, or the other, how do we bring a relief valve without calling for an entire moratorium of the code?
But I would argue a lot of the folks who had, had frustrations with the code and had a, had a difficult time getting through the code and who were disadvantaged by the code were, had, had single projects. And that's not the scenario that a PDD is gonna be applied to. PDD is gonna be applied to somebody doing, you know, either commercial or, or multiple houses. And so, you know, I think, I think when, when someone wants to do that, that comes with a, a greater level of community responsibility and responsibility to, um, to participate in the community i- in a positive way that reflects the values of that community, which I think we laid out. So, um, you know, I, I definitely think, you know, there, there's, there's reason to consider a PDD, but I, in general, it, it concerns me that, that it will chip away at the code. And I certainly think it, it warrants multiple public discussions, because it took multiple public discussions for us to reach the code where we are now. And I think if we're going to make this kind of change, it warrants broader community impact.
I, I would say if the community understood, um, the total impact, Pearl River, for example, who's been touted as, they're great, they're gonna come, they're meeting every segment of the code. It's great, it's great, it's great, it's great. Pearl River has come with an ask of upwards of $50 million because of the expense in the code.
Is it possible to have some developers come speak to this commission? I'd like to hear from them as well.
Sure, sure. We can do it in a, in a workshop roundtable type format?
Um, just so that we don't seem like we are anti-development. I think that everybody on this commission is pro-development. I just would like to know what issues they are experiencing that we need to consider when making these decisions. I think we need to hear from everybody.
Sure. I, I'll give you an example right now of Burleson East, who's trying to develop. In the current block structure, there is a connection point in between the shopping center itself. Cuts right across and connects to Wagon Wheel. A public street that will be traversed by, um, not only the public, but also those 18-wheelers and everything else that's going to feed those retailers. So the city is now taking on an onus of maintaining a public street that's going to have a whole heck of a lot of use on it, but we don't have an industrial standard or a standard of a street. So that's our street maintenance dollars. On top of that, because of the block structure and the sidewalk and that connectivity, there's sidewalk that's required on Wagon Wheel, and there will be sidewalk that's also required along 71. And there's sidewalk that will be required all along, um, the shopping center. That sidewalk doesn't really connect to anything right now, and so one of the discussions is where does that sidewalk make sense? And where do those connectivity points make sense?
It makes sense to me, for example, because I live right near there. And I would love to be able to get on a bicycle and ride from my neighborhood to downtown, especially once they put through the street that's gonna come through, what is it, Agnes? Is that the street coming through there? Right? Or ride over and go across the way to Garcia's and have lunch or something like that. But there's no way to do that right now, because yes, it's a, it's a freeway and everything else, but there's no sidewalks around there. There's no anything around there. I think part of, you know, the, the reason accessibility and walkability and all these things are built in is not only for that, because people do still do that, even though a lot of folks don't, you know, walk or bike or do a lot of those things. Downtown, they ride around golf carts all day. Well, we don't have that over where I am, but, you know, being able to ride a bike places would be nice. It's, it's a combination of that, and that's why that's important to have those things, especially when future development will tie into those things. So putting them down now and then tying them in later is a lot easier than going back and trying to lay all that down. And also, I think part of it is that turning this new development that comes in into just the same thing as Austin to Plugerville and Round Rock, or 290 till you get to 610 in Houston where it's a sea of Generica everywhere, is part of the main focus of that. And I think one of the reasons why a lot of folks are hesitant to erode that, when you talk about, well, what is Bastrop? What is that authentic Bastrop? I think it's trying to keep some character and some flavor here, so that doesn't turn into generic America. So it doesn't look like a sea of suburbia going all the way towards Austin one day. And so, having things like sidewalks built in, having things like lots of trees and stuff like that, you know, the, the crossing that's over there now has tons of useless parking that never gets used, right? That could have been a lot of other things. And so, that's one of the reasons why when they went, came in for the second one, it's like, well, we don't need a giant paved over area. We, we would actually like these things. It would be nice to do those. Yeah, not everybody ut, utilizes that. But I think a lot of people do, and I think a lot of younger people do as well, and that's kinda what they're looking for. And so, that's part of the main focus, I think, that we don't wanna lose in B3 is the characteristic of not gonna look like every place between Cy Fair, Side Creek, all the way down, straight in 290 into Houston, not looking like everything from New Braunfels to Georgetown now, where it's just a, a bunch of strip malls everywhere, and trying to maintain some sort of flavor and some sort of uniqueness, but also with that walkability and everything else that, that everybody's talking about. That's why I think that that's important.
Not, and not that that sidewalk, not that that development won't have a sidewalk. Not that it won't have a sidewalk, and not that it won't have connectivity. It's where are those connection points? And, and where is a future sidewalk planned? Where, if there's a future sidewalk planned on 71, because TechStot is coming in to put a hike and bike trail along the frontage of 71, then let's make sure it connects to 71. Let's make sure it connects, not just require a sidewalk for the sake of a block code to require a sidewalk that's gonna not go anywhere, is the point. Because, so the way the block structure is set up, there's a sidewalk required along all of the blocks. The shopping center itself is not necessarily a quote-unquote block. It's a large block with interior circulation. So to require sidewalks along some of that interior when, yes. So there are some like not connectivity points. Where we have planned connection points and transportation nodes, yes, absolutely. Along 71, the connection point to Burleson, the connection point to the school, absolutely. But there are some areas within the development that make absolutely no sense to have a sidewalk.
I think that would be on a case-by-case basis.
Absolutely, which is what a PDD does.
Well, no, no, no. What I mean on case-by-case basis is, is it depends on their, what they, what they submit. You know, as a developer, they don't wanna give up parking spaces. I get that. They don't wanna give up this and that, because that's how they're gonna lure people in, right? Lure in the.
Actually, nobody likes a lot of overparking today.
The targets and the stuff, well, but that was what was argued when they were here talking about all those variances they wanted for, for the new development was, they didn't want all that, they didn't wanna put in all these interior roads and trees and things because it would take away parking. And he stood here and argued that if you take away parking, then he's not gonna be able to attract the big vendors. Okay, well, that's the opposite of what we're talking about now, which is, they don't care about parking. Well, yes, they do, because that's what he was saying, that, that this is, we're talking about a developer here. So, you know, it seems almost like it's just like, we don't wanna end up in a situation of just giving developers what we want, what they want, because then we're gonna end up with everything else that looks the same. Total generic, not Bastrop to itself. But we understand there are problems with it. So fixing So fixing the problems is going to take a lot more time, I think this is what you're saying, than just coming in and saying, all right, let's throw this at it and see what that does. I think we need to really take a listen to the public and everyone else and find out, okay, what do we really want to do going forward, and not just jump in and try to do it as quick as possible? Because we don't want to lose a lot of those characteristics of B3, because that's why they were developed over all that time.
And if the developer still has a problem, it, I don't know why, because he was given every warrant that he asked for, so maybe he didn't ask for enough, but he was given everything he asked for, not by us, but by the council.
I'm not saying he has a problem, I'm saying when I look at the development, and I look at the warrants, and I look at the connectivity, it doesn't make sense to me.
And Scott, to your point, you know, the cities or places where I've seen PDDs utilized, enabled, it's never been a vehicle for cookie-cutter development. And as a matter of fact, a lot of them steer or require in their criteria or standards that the developer demonstrates some type of innovative concept, and typically to maximize the benefits to the public. So that's a way in which that can be addressed, but definitely I understand-
That can happen, is what you're saying, that is a possibility of it, but that's not necessarily, you know, that's not 100% how it's going to go. It's just a case-by-case.
Well, and we've dealt with this with warrants. We had First National Bank come, and they had some warrants, and they came with an, you know, innovative way to deal with the driveway, and we looked at it as a community, and, you know, were able to move through it.
Is that where the Starbucks is?
No, this is the one on Water Street and Spring Street.
Oh, okay, gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
And that was for the signs, correct, if I'm not-
Not just that, there was a lot.
No, this is for the drive-through, the ATM.
No, the sign was ZBA.
The sign was something different. It was concerned that a pedestrian might get hit by somebody who was going through the ATM, and we worked through it.
As we did with the driveway and the parking and the orientation of the drive-through lanes. So, you know, I, when we start talking about, this is getting away, getting away from the PDD a little bit, but when we start talking about what's equitable, and how we want this, you know, we've talked about equitability a lot, we talked about it with chain-link fences. What's equitable is to have people be able to get to where they need to go without having to have a car. And that is integral to this code. And, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to get away from cars, but for somebody who has some sort of mobility issue, whatever that is, to be able to get there, you know, safely, logically, and move through the parking lot in a way that's comfortable and makes them want to be in that place and spend their money there and contribute to our, you know, to our economy, I think it behooves us to facilitate that. And, you know, we talked last time about developers and the tree coverage, and, you know, having developers come in and they put where there was supposed to be a tree every 20 feet, they put three trees and they have a big gap, and so-
I ought to go see Pearl River today. We had to put a stop work order because they took down every single tree.
I saw it when I drove home.
And they weren't allowed to do that, but, you know, hey, B3 code building.
Well, you know, it just, I, yeah, I think it, I think we've done a really good job of drilling down and, you know, to Ms. Correio's credit, to finding those low-hanging fruit and getting to the meat of what needs to be addressed in this code. But creating a, I'm concerned about creating a PDD overlay that will wash away some of that ability for us to do our jobs on this board and be creative and work with people, you know, as citizens who are going to live with this day-to-day, that's my concern.
Well, I think we've had some good discussion, and we've been given some information to pour over and learn more about it.
Yes, you do, you have a, this is about a 1998 document, and it's really just a PDD primer, because a PDD district can be created in a number of ways, as Commissioner Kaler stated, as an overlay. What is being proposed today is not an overlay, it's an actual district, just to get that clear. And it's, it does allow for flexibility and creativity. I'm just, I'm going to go back and read the charge of this commission, because I'm not sure that the charge is to negotiate at the dais. That is at a staff level. So I'm going to go back and read that and understand that.
We're going to have a public hearing next time on this, correct?
Yes.
So we'll be able to hear what the public has to say, and we'll have more input.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go on to item number five, updates, 5A updates on recent City Council actions regarding development services department items.
So this particular, I think you saw this graphic, there are more white spaces in the last graphic. At this point, this position, the Assistant Planning Director, is vacant. That position has been downgraded to a Senior Planner. We just made that offer, and that offer was accepted with the June 14th start date. We have another planner who is, will also be, they're also in the offer period, hopefully coming to us from the city of Austin. And then, so that will only leave a vacancy of the Electrical Inspector and the Development Engineer. I'm going to hold off on the position of Director simply because I want the team to meld, I want the team to gel. And sometimes folks come in with a different idea of how they want the team to function. So I'd rather get the team going, and as you know, we fire the coach, not the team, that's why city managers have the tenure that they do. So hopefully, hopefully, and I'm really, really, really excited about the team that we are building. I don't know if you've met our new building official who's in the back, James Cowie. James comes to us with 40-plus years of experience and also having been on the private side. And Ms. PJ Collins, who is our newest development technician. We have another technician named Alondra, who we stole away from the county, she wasn't able to be here tonight. Of course, you guys are familiar with Melissa. And then Kay Sepikas, who's in the audience, has now taken position as our Process Improvement Manager, and as we go and begin to teach, she's creating the educational pieces and the documents and helping me with process. So in terms of the process amendments that we've made internally, the super simple ones, I told you that there is an automated permit process now that is occurring where staff doesn't have to touch those super simple permits. It's happening in the background. If a plumbing company wants to submit for a water heater change-out, they're able to do that, it's automatic. Nobody's touching it, nobody's hearing it, nobody's feeling it. We do an audit at the end of the month, and of the 47 that were issued, only one of those is out of compliance. So I think that's a bang-up job, and that was 47 permits staff didn't need to touch, and they went through the process. And then recent City Council actions, there has, there has been none. The council is waiting for the nonconforming lot and structure ordinance you just voted on today to take action at their next council meeting.
And you've already gone through, have you gone through 5B?
Nope, that's what we're about to do. So 94, for the month of October, 94 new requests. Staff is super busy, as you can see, there's a lot of temporary construction because folks are getting sites, preparation work. There is a lot of, again, underground stuff going on, and then we have the onesies and twosies. What you should see in the May and June timeframe is as these underground things have taken off, you should start seeing things go vertical. I mentioned Pearl River, they are, they broke ground on the apartment portion of it, there's some issues there, we did issue a stop work order today. And we are at 5C.
5C, individual requests from commissioners, that particular items we at list on future agendas.
Can I, sorry. We're going after low-hanging fruit. I wanted to continue the discussion that Cynthia had brought up on a number of occasions about the sign ordinance. I know we had a mural put in recently, and I think everyone would agree, it's only added to downtown. I know it was a very difficult process for that business owner to put it in, so I'd like us to revisit that and see if we can streamline that process.
Okay. Anything else?
If we need to revisit our fee schedule, since the city's going to be noticing 500 feet, if we need to look at that again, I would say we should, you know, bring that back, since it's going to be a greater burden on the city expense-wise.
I think we're handling that in the budget process.
Great.
Anything else?
We did have a very good month, I think the department was, I believe, $80,000 to the green this month alone.
Yay. Green is always good.
Green is always good. And we are reducing dramatically that 1.4 million of outsourced.
Good.
Any other requests? Other than your workshop with the development community? So Madam Chair, what I would ask is that you perhaps create a subcommittee that can discuss, that doesn't meet a quorum.
All right.
After, so when we meet next time, we'll meet as a group, but then there'll probably be some work to be done, and you may want to appoint a smaller group.
Okay. If that's the pleasure of the commission, we'll surely do that. If not, we're stuck with all having to be here.
I do have a request myself, and I would like us to go to, every two weeks, don't throw anything at me, because I would like us to go to a workshop and then action, a workshop and then action, so that we have a greater ability to have just pure discussion without any action, without the sort of rush that happens when we're here. I know 6:30 is a late time, and so, like, right now it's already turning to dusk, and I'm worried about my dog, but, and we all worried about dinner and businesses and everything else. So that is a request I have of the commission, and you don't have to-
We normally meet at 6:00. 6:30 was because-
Impact fee.
Impact fees. So what would your request be?
Every two weeks.
Could you send us some dates and what that would look like, so we can check calendars and make sure we can get forums and-
Two weeks from today, and then so on.
Is this moving forward or just short-term?
Or maybe temporarily?
It may be temporary. It may be temporary, as we work through some of the additional development stuff that's going to be coming our way.
Okay.
But I don't want us to schedule meetings, and we know that we can't get a quorum, so that's my main concern there.
Yeah, summer's hard.
Yeah, it's summer coming up, too. And I've got two great-grandbabies that are going to be born this summer, so I know I'll be outside. Great-grandbaby.
All right.
Item six.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Who was that? Oh, Scott.
Thank you, folks.
Who was the second?
Ishmael.
Ishmael. They didn't even vote, they just took off.
Look, nobody's going to go away.